And give you 10 seconds starting now. Welcome, everybody. I, Councilmember Hall, called the November 9th Council Study Session to Order. Just a couple opening remarks to kick us off today. First, due to the Governor's Proclamation 20-28 related to the COVID-19 emergency in open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. First, there is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make your comments after the presentation in council question and answer period on each of tonight's agenda items. I will also ask Council President Hunt to share a summary of any comments that we have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take a roll call of the council members in attendance, and you guys know the drill. Please say here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman has an excused absence this evening, so Council President Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Martz.
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. With that, the first item on our agenda tonight is public comment. So if there's anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but did not sign up to speak in advance, please raise your virtual hand. You can do so if you joined on the phone by pressing star three, or if you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This varies by device, but one option may be to look to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. And I will wait just a moment now to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand to speak during this first public comment opportunity. All right, Clerk Geezer, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
No, and it actually appears that we don't have anyone from the public attending the meeting at this time.
All right. Well, we'll keep an eye out as we progress through the agenda in case other people join and want to make public comment later on. But just as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time by email at citycouncil@isiquawwa.gov. I'm also going to go to Council President Hunt now to summarize any email comments we may have received in advance.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. We did receive one email comment specific to an item on tonight's agenda. And while we've been having virtual meetings, I've been summarizing emailed comments that we received specific to items on the agenda. And that comment was on ID 0917, the 2021 Comp Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. And the comment was in support of the amendments that are on the subject of climate action. That concludes comments that we received by email that specifically reference tonight's agenda items.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Council President Hunt. And with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda tonight, which is ID 0917, 2021 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. And this will be presented by our very own Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner. Kristin, take it away.
Good evening. Oops, something. There we go. There we go. Good evening. This is Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner with the Community Planning and Development Department. See you all. It's been a while. And we are here to talk about your first run at the Proposed 2021 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. And we are looking for direction from you all to proceed with the proposed amendments at the December 6, 2021 Regular Council Meeting for Action. A little background, you all, the City Council approved the Proposed Comprehensive Plan and zoning map docket of 2021 amendments on February 16 of this year. The Planning Policy Commission held a public hearing on October 14 and then reviewed and made a recommendation to approve the four docket amendments that are included in the proposed amendments. The amendments include land use element, which a lot of data updates, but they also include updates to the climate change goals and policies. Then we have redesignations and rezones of city-owned properties. The Old Town Subarea Plan, specifically the implementation of that, and the Capital Facilities Element, again, specifically, this is the Public Facilities Map. Added this slide in, I realized that we mentioned there were six items on the docket for being recommended, and two are not. I thought I would tell you why. One was possible cleanup as necessary regarding the Title 18 updates. We are not far along, far enough along to know what needs to be updated as far as policies go. And the second was a redesignation and rezone request of a private property, but the property owner withdrew the application. I'm going to start with the land use element and the data. You might recall that back in 2016, the City Council asked staff to start tracking the number of units and jobs we got each year toward our 2031 state-adopted housing and jobs targets. So every year, we submit permit data to the Office of Financial Management, and they come back to us with confirming the number of housing units that we have. And in 2021, as of April 1, 2021, we had added 315 new units, taking us to 17,739 units total. And this means that we'd achieved 104% of our target. Our target was 5,750 new units between 2006 and 2021. And we're now at 5,995 new units. Jobs, on the other hand, went the other direction. So these are of December 31, 2020. And we lost about 3,000 jobs that year. So our target is 20,000. We're now at 7,573 new jobs. And we went from about 53% of our target to now about 38% of our target. This is also the year we got to update our available land supply and capacity. So this is because we did the growth targets, capacity study, and for over about the past two years. And what we've determined is that we have about 551 acres of redevelopable and vacant land for residential properties, 258 acres for commercial property, which means just over 12,000, about 12,000 housing units and just over 21,000 jobs. I mentioned the OFM data, our Office of Financial Management data that we submit. And they come back to us with housing units. They also come back to us with households, which is the number of occupied housing units, and persons per household, which gives us our population. So this year, they round up. And we, as I mentioned, we're at 17,739 housing units, but at 39,840 people. Moving on to land use element still, but designations and zoning. Though, the first one is BlackBerry Park. We, this was annexed to the city in 2006. King County owned this property. We acquired it from them. It was used as a park when we annexed it. And part of the interlocal agreement with King County is that it will remain a park. And King County has, or the City of Isaguay has begun discussions with the neighborhood about what kinds of parks improvements they would like to see. Right now, the zoning is single-family small lot, and the proposal is to change it to community facilities recreation. Parcels are part of it. They're in Newport area. They are a result of both the Central Isaguay Plan, which required that parks be dedicated in this area. And then the Anthology Development, they're the ones who developed, so they dedicated the property to the city. There are two parcels here. They're kind of hard to see. The one on the left, the kind of handle, that's going to be the park. And that, right, and then the one on the right is community or is critical areas and will remain as open space. So they're both currently zoned Village Residential. And the proposal is to rezone the park as community facilities recreation and the open space as community facilities open space. This is also, not only were they required to do it, but it's included on the plat that these remain as parks and open space. Lastly, these were formerly known as Burghsma, but are now the Harvey Manning Park Extension. There are six parcels included here. Three are currently zoned single-family estates, two are single-family suburban. The intent of acquiring these parcels was to keep them as open space. So that was our intent in the first place, but because of money that was used, King County funding that was used and grant funding that was used, they are required to remain as open space. So the plan is to include things like trails and overlooks and benches, and that's about it. Should those be approved, our land use designation map and the land use element will also be updated to reflect those changes. Onto the Old Town Subarea Plan. So I went to the different departments and asked them to please help me, tell me where things stood with the implementation table and where we stood. And we were asked to change a couple of the policies. One is just to simplify this one, facilitate mobility options to improve access to Old Town. They thought it was very specific. Some people weren't aware of the shuttle. They said, let's just say we want to improve access. So we did that. We're proposing that. And then the second one was, it said strive for the Mobility Master Plan to do this, but we've now written it, so they just asked us to change it to implement the Mobility Master Plan. Real intent here was to update the immediate or the Action Program Status Table. The City Council asked us to include this in the plan in 2019, so this is the second time I've brought it to you. We're also, there was an Action Program list and then an Action Program table, and we're proposing to just combine the two and make it this. So we just went through and updated those things this year that have been done. Things that are minor challenges, things that are major challenges. I picked just sections from the Immediate Actions, Short-Term Actions, and Longer-Term Actions. I picked the first few. Capital Facilities Element, all we did was update the Public Facilities Map. And it was, at one point, we had the Tiger Mountain Community High School, and it's apparently now called Gibson Eck, which I never found out about until this year, so we changed that. We also reseparated the nine and 10, which are going to be the new, eventually, elementary school and high school. Made it clear that that was not the name. Just some technical changes. And then we also added the Senior Center, Community Center, the Pool, and Pickering Farm at the request of Parks. Lastly, I know these are a little out of order, but it makes a reason for it. Land Use Element, Climate Change Goals and Policies. So you all, as you know, the Climate Action Plan has been in the works since the beginning of the year. And you all have seen it. The Environmental Board has seen it. Planning Policy Commission has seen it, and that's been worked on. This went to the Planning Policy Commission last time at the public hearing, and went to them twice and came back for the public hearing, and they had no changes to the proposed goals and policies. So here, I've only included the goals. But we can answer questions about those if you would like. On, and I believe that that's coming back to you on December 6 as well for discussion. So at December 6, we are hoping for council action, but we have to wait on your direction. And if you're okay with us proceeding with the proposed amendments, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Kristin. Turn it over to the council now. Are there any questions about this agenda item? Well, I'm not seeing anything. So with that, I think we'll move on to public comment. And I'll ask Clerk Geezer if anyone else has logged into the meeting or called into the meeting and might be interested in making comments.
Councilmember Hall, I don't see that we have any of the, any members of the public either joining the meeting or phoning in at this point.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate you checking on that. With that, the next step is council direction. So are we comfortable with this how, with this how it is and coming back to us at the next meeting? Or what meeting was it? December 6? I'm seeing lots of yeses. So maybe I'll just give it a few more seconds in case anyone else has a different opinion. Otherwise, Kristin, I think you're seeing a resounding good job and yes. Deputy Council President Ray, go ahead.
I just thought I would say something so we didn't have to sit and wait. I think it looks great. I think, I think the team did a great job. And thanks to the boards and commissions who provide input. You know, this was, we've had difficult Comprehensive Plan amendments. This one was, was, was pretty well done and pretty easy. So thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
I'll echo that. Thanks, Kristin. Thank you for, good job. Well done. All right, with that, I think, Kristin, let me just double check with you. Do you have what you need?
I do. It's the easiest presentation I've ever made. Thank you.
Of course. All right, then. With that, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is ID 0926, Proposed 2022 Budget Final Deliberations. And I'll turn it over to Autumn Monahan, the Acting Finance Director, and Susie Montcel, the Interim Budget Manager. Oh, Autumn, it looks like you're muted. Yeah.
And Autumn, this is Tisha. You should find your mute button at the top of the screen you're sharing if you move your cursor up there.
Thank you. Found it. Thank you. Sorry, apologies. Thank you, Councilmember Hall, members of the City Council. My name is Autumn Monahan. I'm the Interim Finance Director. This is the City Council's final deliberations of the 2022 budget with adoption slated for November 15, which is next Monday. The council's last study session, more information is requested on opportunities for the city's one-time investment fund. And as a reminder, the administration's recommendation of how to spend this 1.25 million of one-time funds included two initiatives, an employee benefit, and then paying off the Burghsma debt. For the employee benefit, we are proposing allocating $300,000 in 2022 for employees who served during the pandemic. We plan to have a full policy for the council's consideration after we do a bit more analysis on which employees would qualify, what's allowed by the state, and what amount would be allocated per employee. And a policy will be ready for the council's review by its December 6 meeting. Meanwhile, council members did ask for some more details on possible scenarios for paying off all or some of the Burghsma debt, which totals 3.85 million. We heard requests on three scenarios that we'll review tonight. The first is not paying off the Burghsma debt, but pursuing new debt package in the future, partially paying off the Burghsma debt, and then fully paying off the Burghsma debt. Before we start, for all of the following scenarios we'll review tonight, we assumed a 20-year term on any new debt package we may pursue. For any estimated interest savings, we assumed the current market rates plus 1%. And we also assumed a maximum annual debt service of 1.75 million, which is equal to our LTGO debt service for this current year. One additional factor to keep in mind is that the 2022 Proposed Budget already anticipates some debt falling off this year with a savings of $430,000 a year. So in other words, if we were to get any new debts, would require an additional $430,000 per year in debt service. And then the annual debt service savings you'll see in the following slides represent savings for each year we do not pursue in that new debt package. So the first scenario, if we remain status quo and we do not pay off any debt and pursue a new debt package in the future, we would have about 12.1 million in capacity for new borrowing. The second scenario, paying off partially, if we only use the RCO grant revenues of the 2.7 million to pay off the Burghsma debt, which, as a reminder, totals 3.85 million, our capacity for new borrowing would be 14.8 million. Paying off this portion of that outstanding balance would result in a total interest savings of about $300,000, along with an annual debt service savings of $427,000 for each year the city does not pursue a new debt package. If we make this partial payoff, we could return the remaining $950,000 of the one-time investment fund to the general fund fund balance, and this would bring the estimated fund balance to about 19%. And just as quick note, this estimate assumes the reduced debt service from paying off the debt. And then the final scenario, we would pay off the full 3.85 million of the Burghsma debt, utilizing the 2.7 million of the RCO grant, $950,000 from the one-time investment fund, and additional $200,000 from the general fund fund balance. Our capacity for new borrowing would then be 16.1 million. Paying off the full outstanding balance would also result in a total interest savings of $436,000, along with an annual debt service savings of $470,000 for each year we do not pursue a new debt package. And that jumps up to $730,000 in 2025 moving forward. And this would bring our estimated ending fund balance to expenditures to 17%. So here is a summary of those scenarios so you can kind of compare them side by side. The partial payoff option assumes we would not allocate the rest of the one-time investment fund outside of that employee benefit. If we found another purpose for that $950,000, then the fund balance would be 18%. And so administrations' proposed options include fully paying off the Burghsma debt or partially paying off the debt of the 2.7, using the 2.7 million of the RCO grant and returning the difference to ending fund balance. And just quickly, some next steps. Following council's discussion tonight, we'll be working to prepare the budget for final adoption on Monday. And with that, we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Autumn. And it looks like the first question goes to you, Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. This is Councilmember Walsh. Autumn, I'm not sure this question's going to go to you so much as general administration. One of the reasons, I think, was proposed for why we are looking at paying off debt in order to create more debt capacity is for, to provide options for the community funding task force. I don't remember what the exact name is. And I know they're in the process, so I'm wondering if the administration can give a general timeline for when they think they'll have a set of recommendations coming back to the administration and council as for whether they want to use debt, how they want to use it, et cetera. Because I'm trying to evaluate this concept, but not knowing whether that's, you know, when that recommendation is coming back to us.
I believe that, I believe it's in the first quarter of 2022, and as soon as late January. Am I right on that, Administrator Bockwitz?
I believe so, but Andrew Schneider, the Deputy City Administrator, is also on the line, and she is staffed committee. Andrew, do you want to add anything?
I know that's accurate. Thanks.
Councilmember Walsh, did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Councilmember De Michelle.
So my question is about the 300,000 for the personnel benefit. It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we would adopt that as part of the budget at the next meeting. But you're not coming back to us with a recommendation until December 6. So are we, we, are we being asked to approve 300,000? That's it? You can't spend anymore? Or are we being asked to approve 300,000-ish? Or, so explain to me what, what my options, as I'm considering this, are. Thank you.
So the $300,000 is very much a placeholder as we work to shape the policy, and we have a full set of employees who are eligible. And following that, if we need to make tweaks, this is an expenditure in 2022. We can always come back with a budget amendment as well for any specific amount. But that's our, our best estimate at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then just a quick follow-up question. So that's our best. Oh, this is Councilmember Hall, sorry. That's our best estimate as of right now, but we don't think it's in the realm of possibility that you would come back next year, and it's actually a lot more than we thought, right? It's somewhere around that $300,000 range, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thanks. All right, great. Any other questions from council? All right, not seeing any. I will go back one more time to Clerk Geezer to ask if there's any members of the public on the line.
There are still not.
All right, thank you. So next up then is council comments, council direction. So let's open up the floor to anyone who'd like to make comments. I also just want to say right off the bat that I wrote out in advance of the meeting, I wrote out a couple thumbs up, thumbs down questions about options with one-time investment fund monies to make it clear to the administration what our direction is. So we can absolutely use those if the council wants to. But I thought we might as well open up for comments first in case anyone has anything they'd like to say in particular about any of these options. So with that, we'll start with Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. This is Chris Ray. So very supportive of the $300,000 for bonuses or compensation for staff who hung in there during the pandemic. And I have great confidence the administration will find a way to manage within that budget number. My bias and my preference around the additional funding, and particularly in terms of debt retirement, is since we have the means to retire the entire Burghsma debt, and that, that would be my, my preference. And that then frees up additional debt capacity, actually maximizes our debt capacity and provides a greater amount of flexibility for the task force that is looking at our future and how to manage our future capital investments. And so that's the option that gives them the greatest amount of flexibility, in my opinion. So that's, that's my bias.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. This is Councilmember Martz. I would, though, the fully payoff option, there's a lot to like about it. And I certainly think that we should be looking at what sort of investments we can make to improve things that are important in our community, which is the point of the committee after all. I'm a little bit worried about 17%. I kind of feel like if our financial target is 15 to 20%, I sort of feel like 19% is closer to where I want to be because stuff comes up. And I'd rather be at the high end of our target range than at the low end of our target range. So I'm probably more partial to the partial payoff option. But I'm certainly interested in hearing from my fellow council members and, and flexible. I like the idea in general. I'm not necessarily crazy about getting, getting down to 17%. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Councilmember Walsh, you're up next.
Thank you. Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I think the reason I asked about the Community Funding Task Force, Financing Task Force, is because I've, as much as I like the idea of paying down debt in general, and I'm very much in favor of the 2.7 million going toward that, I feel like it's taking away an option from the Community Financing Task Force if we choose to pay off the debt because cash may be more important. And so if cash, being able to do a planning project in order to get grant money or do a planning project now so that you can take on debt or something, if that's more important than us making the decision now to pay off that debt effectively takes that option away from the Community Financing Task Force. So I guess what I would say is I would rather let the Community Task Force have the chance to really mull through those things and look at it as a larger picture. And if they say, hey, we want to do this debt, or we would rather do borrowing and having the extra debt capacity would be good, couldn't we, as a council, just pay off the debt in the middle of the year? Is that, I guess, that's partially a question and partially just me saying I'd like to let the task force have the options. And so if that is an option, I think that provides the most flexibility without all that much harm by waiting and letting the conversation play out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. And before we go on to the next one, I may actually ask Autumn or Susie to jump in and kind of address that and just clarify if we're able to pay off the debt mid-year if we wanted to.
Yes, you could always make a decision mid-year and a mid-year adjustment if you like to pay off the debt using funds from the ending fund balance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I am supportive of the $300,000, first of all. And I think that is a good idea that was brought forward by Councilmember Hall. So I appreciate that. Then on to the partial payment versus complete payment of the Burksma debt. I think it's a solid option to pay off the debt. I think that, that is a something I don't, you know, I think there's reasons to do that and it makes good financial sense. On the other hand, I think we do have new information now that it's a marginal impact as far as it saves us 100,000, approximately 100,000 on the interest and is a few million of capacity, which as Councilmember Walsh was speaking to, we, we don't know if we need that additional capacity for our next project because we don't actually have a particular project in mind for this debt capacity and the community capital finance task force is still doing their work. So I think that that difference that we get for completely paying off versus paying off the 2.7 million, which was the Burksma grants, is not particularly compelling. And in fact, I think the Burksma grants, paying down the Burksma debt with that Burksma grants, that I fully support. But the additional funds, it seems that we have other options for. And to me, I, I still come back to that I think it would be very appealing to both pay down our debt for a large open space acquisition and put money aside for future open space acquisitions. I think that has a nice symmetry to it. And we do have in our strategic plan as one of the actions that we would dedicate funds for strategic plan for open space acquisitions in a strategic way. Dedicating some funds at this time when we have additional one-time funds to be spent out of one-time use. Seems like a good time to do that. And it would give us more agility and more ability to to leverage grant dollars. So I think it could end up saving us money. It's hard to know because it's, it's not certain, but I think it's definitely a possibility. And given our history of, of stewarding our lands in our open space and wanting to continue in that tradition, I think it would be a a good decision to start putting money aside for that and to plan in a more strategic way and put more, more aside when we have it. So that would be my preference, which would be the partial paying down and partial putting aside for a dedicated fund for open space for the future. Yeah, and I, I think we're about halfway through the strategic plan. The other thing that I think made me think this, this is an appealing use of these funds is that this budget in particular has a different, it advances us in different goal areas, but it doesn't have very much funds set aside for environmental stewardship. Definitely advances, for example, in the public safety and human services. And that is one of the emphasis is, yeah, one of the focuses of the plan, but there's not very much in terms of percentage or in terms of advancements of environmental stewardship. And open space acquisition, open space is not going to get any cheaper over time. So there's no time like the present if we have one-time funds to to do that action, which we said we would do in the strategic plan. So that would be my preference. Again, I think it's a solid, solid option to pay down the Burksma debt, but my preference would be to pay down a lot of it, give ourselves that flexibility and then put some aside for future open space.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Real quickly, I just want to check in with Councilmember DeMichele to see if you had any comments you wanted to add here. Otherwise, I'm gonna do a little summarizing and maybe move on to a couple thumbs up, thumbs down. It seems like we might be in agreement on a majority of the discussion items tonight, so that might go smoother than I thought it would. But Councilmember DeMichele, do you have anything else you'd like to add before we do that?
I'll just add that I too support the $300,000. I do have, you know, I have a small amount of angst about it in that I'm, I'm without knowing how many employees would be covered and how much the compensation would be. I, I'm hoping that it's an amount that is equal to the sacrifice that many of our employees gave us. So, so, but I am willing to wait and see what, what the administration comes back with on December the 6th. We have some really good options in front of us and I think, I think that I fall on the side of paying off the entire amount and freeing up that debt capacity. I think their, Council President Hunt makes a good case for the acquisition of land. But if we are going into a major plan for increasing, you know, our ability to build infrastructure and so forth, I think we may need that debt capacity. So I think I think I fall there on that question. So I would prefer to just, let's just pay it off and get it over and done with. So, so that's where I'm falling on that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. All right, so I, what I think I'm hearing then from council is alignment on the $300,000-ish employee benefit and alignment on using the Burksma grant on, to pay down Burksma debt. And in the very least, those two. Is that right? And do we need to do a thumbs up, thumbs down for those? Uh, and I'll go to Deputy Counsel President Ray.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Hall. This is Chris Ray. I just wanted to do a second round here because I was a bit compelled by Councilmember Walsh's thoughts that though my preference is to pay it off, if we think that there's flexibility associated with, with hanging on to some of the cash and then recognizing that in first quarter or early next year, we could pay off the balance at that point, it could be that that gives us a, a bit of a win-win situation where we have the flexibility of having the additional cash while we need it, but we can also free up our maximum debt capacity early next year by just paying off the debt. So you know, my, my preference may have been swayed slightly into we have, you know, we, it's, you know, it's not a decision we have to make today. There's no great financial benefit and there's no cliff if we don't make it today. So if there's a general sense that flexibility is good, we may be in a position where we can get the best of both worlds by, by saying, let's, let's plan right now to pay off the, with the grant funding that we got and then circle around with additional funds early next year if we feel that that's appropriate at that time. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And I realized I haven't shared any comments of my own too. So I'll just jump in and say, you know, I guess first this, I think this is a good problem to have, to be talking about this issue. I think the idea of using the Burksma grant to pay down Burksma debt is a good idea and not using one-time investment fund monies to pay down that debt is a good idea too, at least right now. And I think Councilmember Walsh brings up a good idea. Although I think I actually lean a little bit more towards Council President Hunt's proposal of using those remaining dollars on a potential open space fund to continue to look at our strategic goals and the strategic plan and how that aligns with potential opportunities for open, open space acquisition. I liked the symmetry to that too. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think that we can have a conversation here where it's and instead of or, so we pay down debt and free up debt capacity for the capital finance community task force to play around with. And we're able to accomplish starting one of our goals laid out or potential actions laid out in the strategic plan, which is starting a fund for the acquisition of open space in this class. So I think that's where I'd lean. So I think what I'm hearing right now then is everyone except one in favor of partially paying down the debt instead of entirely paying down the debt with the Burksma grant. And then a little bit of disagreement on whether or not to just hold on one to those one-time investment fund monies or to invest them in a different project. So do does the council think we need to do a thumbs up, thumbs down here to give the administration better direction? Or what do you all think in terms of next steps? Or maybe administration, if you have a preference here too, I'd love to hear it.
No preference.
All right. Well, in that case, if it's okay with the council, let's just do, oh, um, Deputy, or Deputy, Councilmember DeMichele, go ahead.
Thank you. Just, just to understand what happens if we just hold on to the money. Can we, and that would accrue, you know, month after month after month. So would there be a urgency about getting coming to a final decision like three months in, six months into 2022? Because each month that we delay a decision on that money means that we're losing the, that, that debt capacity that we would have. Do you understand the questions?
I, would you mind repeating it?
Well, I'm just wondering if we just bake that money and, and decide to hold on to it. What are the financial consequences of that?
Um, well, it depends on how long, but it would be, and I can pull up that chart again, but it'd be you know, a small amount of interest savings and then some amount of debt capacity each year, depending on which I, I can, do you want me to put that screen back up?
Yeah, could you throw that up, Autumn? I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
So you see here, if we did the partial payoff, the total interest savings, that would be for the life of the debt. So that would be $300,000 in total. But the annual debt service savings is $427,000.
So we would divide that by 12 and then that would be the monthly savings or?
I, you know, I may phone a friend on that one. I, I don't think that we pay debt service by the month. And I, so I'm not sure how that would, how that would divide out if we were to do a half year versus a full.
Uh, this is Councilmember Hall, perhaps we can call Susie up? Oh, I think I just heard you.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask if you can hear me. I know I've had trouble in the past. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, yeah, um, so I, I do believe there would be some monthly savings month to month, whether we do pay that amount by month or whether we pay it by, you know, half a year or we just pay the amount for the full year. They would just charge us for the amount of the, of the time that we would be doing it before we paid off the full amount. So there would be some savings depending on which month we actually, if we did decide to go back and pay down the balance of it, there would be some savings that we could have had at the beginning of the year if we paid it off entirely at the end of this year, but I, I don't think they would be very large amounts.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, Deputy Counsel President Ray, you have a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, thank you, Councilmember Hall. This is Chris Ray. Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele for your question. What's the amateurization date on this loan? When does it pay off if we don't do anything? If we just rode this horse until it would pay it off by, by amateurizing, when would it be paid off?
Let me look that up for you real quick.
I believe it's 2028.
Okay, so, so the $436,000 is the total interest savings over the six remaining years of the debt, not, not annually. So, you know, just doing some straight lining here. If it's six years, then it's oh, Councilmember Marks helped me out here with the math, but so it's $75,000 a year roughly and that's not that. It's anyway, let's say it's $50,000 a year. So it's $12,000 a month. It's not, you know, it's not a ton of money. We're not paying huge amounts of interest. And, and though the saving accrues over time, it's not, it's not, it's a couple of months is not a huge amount of money.
Thank you. That was a question, comment, math problem.
Uh, Councilmember Walsh, you're up next.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Yep, I'm going to take the math a little bit further. So the 436 savings is if we pay the full amount, the 2.7 million plus the additional amount we're considering. If we only pay the 2.7 million, we save 303,000. So technically what we're talking about as a savings difference for this is 133,000, which divided over six years is $22,000 a year. So toward Councilmember DeMichele's idea, I believe if my math is correct that we're looking at a cost of $1,800 per month in interest on this. So waiting an additional three to six months is pennies in our $50 million budget. And if I have anything wrong in that, let me know.
It looked like Susie had her thinking face on, so I was gonna wait a moment to see if she wanted to respond.
Uh, I, I don't have any better math. That math sounds, sounds good to me.
All right then, since Councilmember DeMichele, this kind of came from a question that you had asked then. I kind of want to go back to you and, and was this a question you were asking because it might change your comments on the direction that you wanted to take?
Yes, that helped, helped me a lot. And yes, it does change my mind. Thank you. I, I, I can see the value then of holding on to it. I, I agree with those who are favoring that.
All right. Well, then it looks like we might, or it sounds like we might just have one question to do a thumbs up, thumbs down on. And that is, are you in favor of holding on to one-time investment fund monies instead of using it to pay down debt and just holding on to it? Not necessarily using it on another project and then waiting for potential action in the coming year? So if we could do that, a thumbs up then would be, yeah, I would like to hold on to the money, not pay down debt with it. And a thumbs down would be I, you know, want to use that money for something else and we should budget it in this budget season. So I think we did this last year too. So if we started like this and just three, two, one, go either up or down, if that sounds good to everyone. All right? All right. Three, two, one, go. So I'm seeing one, two, three, four thumbs up and two thumbs down. So I think the consensus right now from council is to again, the $300,000-ish employee benefit, thumbs up, using Burksma grant to pay down Burksma debt, thumbs up. And then you, um, hold on to the one-time investment fund monies for the time being. And if there's anything else, uh, council wanted to add to that. And then I also just want to go to Autumn and make sure that was clear from the administration's perspective.
One full recap that was super clear. Thank you.
Oh, good. Any other closing comments then from council members? I think that was all of the discussion the administration was hoping to get from us. I guess I'll just say to everyone that worked on the budget, well done. It seemed like a very smooth budget season and really towards the end. If this is the only thing that we had to discuss towards the end, I think that's pretty successful budget season then. So, um, any other comments from council members? Councilmember Marks? Councilmember Martz, go ahead.
Councilmember Goodman isn't here. Sorry, this is Councilmember Martz. If Councilmember Goodman isn't here, I'll be the sole oldster, longtime council member, putting it in the historical context and say, I think this might be the smoothest budget cycle that we've ever had, which given that, you know, our well-appreciated and longtime Director of Finance just left, says even better things about what a great job the staff has done this budget season. It's really, you know, it is COVID season still and, you know, we are, I think, continue to be in a particularly, I don't know, amenable mood. But it's been, it's been a very efficient budget cycle this year. And it's been a pleasure to not have to, you know, some years we really feel like we need to get very, very far into details and it's fair that we do so, but it's nice when we don't have to. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, I'm not seeing any other comments from council members. I just really quickly though, before we close out this conversation and move on to Good of the Order, I want to check in with City Administrator Bob Quitz and make sure we didn't miss anything. Was there anything else you wanted to add to this before we move on?
No, sir, other than to echo your comments regarding the fine budget process. We really appreciate the council's, you know, great work on all this. And certainly, Autumn and Susie and Dale, thank you. We'll say our thank yous again, hopefully next week as well.
Great. Well, with that, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is Good of the Order. Council President Hunt, did you have something for Good of the Order? Great, you're up then.
Thank you. As council knows, the council president writes a budget letter regarding the practice, the past budget and things that we want to point out. And if you have anything that you would like to note for that, please let me know. That process is starting now, the drafting of that letter. So yep, if you have any comments for the president's letter, please let me know. And otherwise, I will just review our past conversations and including tonight's and use that as the basis of the letter and the past letters. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Were you looking for any potential feedback on that tonight or just to connect with you in the coming days and weeks?
Yeah, just to let council know that that drafting of that letter has started. So if you have feedback now, then that would be welcome. But if you have feedback later, that's also, that's also fine.
All right, yeah, I have a quick comment, but I'll go to Councilmember Walsh first.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Thank you for bringing this up, Council President Hunt. I had not gotten it in my head thinking about this yet. But one thing that has been heavily on my mind during this budget season is just the, you know, all of the ARPA funding. And where we are in flux in a different way than any previous year of knowing that we have funds coming in, but we're not quite ready to spend it. And so I think there, that played into the conversations on this, knowing that there was the potential for large spending in the coming year, but that it needed to be a community conversation. So I think that would be something that I would want to highlight in the budget letter. Thanks.
And this is Councilmember, oh, sorry, go ahead, Council President.
I was just saying, got it. Thank you.
I think, I think that's a good point. And the only other thing I would add to was from our last meeting on the budget, we got kind of a, almost felt like an FYI on the how should the city approach funds hit hardest by the pandemic losses? And we kind of advocated a wait and see. And then also the CPD, Community Planning and Development Fees and the cost recovery model there. And it was kind of a wait and see there. So I thought that might be worth putting something about that in the letter so we remember to look at that again next year. Though I'm sure our finance staff will not let us forget it. Great. Any other comments? Anything else for Good of the Order, folks? A short meeting. With that, then, our next item on the agenda is adjournment. So we are adjourned at 7:25 PM. Have a nice evening, everyone.